Hopefully I'm forgiven for that. This is a finance subcommittee meeting. Call it to order at 10:31. And the first item on the
2:31.
10, what did I say? 10:31? Okay. 12:01. What are 10:31? Oh my God. Make a good impression for all of you that are here, your town leadership. December 1st, 2022. Call the meeting to order. And the first thing that we will do is approve the minutes from November 3rd. 20, 20, 2022. Do you have any changes to the minutes?
Um, no, I actually thought they were kind of bleak. I would have liked to have seen more on them, but it's fine. They're, what they are is what they are, so.
Yeah, I had reached out to Tom because I wanted, I was hoping some of the notes from the business program would be itemized in here. Didn't ask if there was any further notes, but.
Yeah, I also think because it doesn't tell us, it would be nice to have a little more detail for people who want to look at them.
I agree. And, and we're resurrecting that, correcting that today. In an effort so that people can re-watch this, including ourselves, and remember what happened. Because I'm not a great note taker, just admit that to the crew here. So the minutes are okay with those comments?
Uh huh.
Okay. So first up on the agenda is, so we have, this is the Main Street Partnership Business Relief Program that we've been talking about since 2021. It's gone through a few iterations. It's changed one way, then it's changed another way. And we're hoping that we have the last version here of the program. I'm gonna, first I'm gonna ask, I know Sarah had asked for council to review both our council and the Main Street Council because Bob D. had been involved at one point early on in the program for feedback. That was when you were homesick, I believe it was. Let me think here.
I don't know, I've been doing this for over a year.
Yeah, no, I know. It was one of those, you, I think. And so I was just wondering if Amy and Melissa, if we got any comments from Bob and okayed the package as we had asked for.
Um, not yet.
Okay, do we have a, is he looking at it? Do you know, like?
He received it. I haven't done a response to it.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's gonna, that's an outstanding item for us. And then we did ask for some changes, so.
So the only change that I apologize, the only change that I had made, but I guess have not saved, is that we did agree that we'd go back to the Board of Finance Subcommittee.
Thank you.
And then on. So that's the only, because I was going through my notes and I was like, I made every change. And I was like, I had made the change and not saved it. We're also going to, under advice of our general counsel, anywhere it says taxes, we're gonna change taxes to commercial property taxes so that there's no question about what we mean. And we're gonna add in, again, that it goes back to the Board of Finance Subcommittee. My apologies. It is on my stated version, but it wasn't the one that I said.
Well, we're, we're both thankful that you said that because we both thought that's what we said and it wasn't in the minutes.
It was. And I do have it in my notes.
Thank you.
So my apologies, because we did have a lot of discussion around it.
So that just would go into number, number four under section five?
Changing under the affidavit, we're gonna change a couple of things. Again, we're specifying that we're looking for the most recent federal taxes. We're gonna change the wording, which I'll send to you, just says, "As a program funded with federal funds, it is understood by all parties that applicants and owners shall have no adverse financial interest with an official or employee of the town of Simsbury and/or the contractor selected to perform the facade work improvement." Okay? We will specify, again, that if the business has been a business less than three years, then we're looking for the most recent financial information. And then he just said to make that, when we, when they do an affidavit, we put in under penalty perjury is the normal.
I like that, that one.
So we've had very little changes, but my apologies that this, the version I sent to you did not have what we discussed, which is it goes back to the Board of Selectmen Finance Subcommittee.
Glad that you had that.
Everything else should be reflected.
So yeah, I just was gonna, my comment was, I, when I first responded, I hadn't seen the panel, the composition of the panel, which we had discussed, but I found it up in the top. Yeah, I was looking everywhere else. So I was, would like to, whatever. I don't get like obsessive. And then the, we had something about the code violations that we need to change?
I did, I did change that.
And then was there something about registering with the Secretary of the State? I don't know why I wrote that down?
No.
No, okay. Clean up the code violations, the taxes.
We did, and then I cleaned up the discrepancies between where it said, so I cleaned up that it says that it can be used for code violations, but in the application, it says that if there are outstanding code violations, they need to explain what they are. And how the grant money would address that.
Okay, as long as they get by the town. Oh, one other, I'll let you go in a sec.
Okay.
Or you were gonna, you're probably gonna say this one too, because we, was, it, it's kind of embedded in here, but just to clarify, as the applications come in, we stream them through to Amy for completeness as they come in. Isn't that what we decided, rather than wait till you guys have made all?
I did, I did reference that. It actually will go, so the applications will come in. They will be accepted or rejected based on completeness only. Okay? So all of the completed applications will then go actually to the town manager's office. And the town manager's office will likely do with the building permits and other permits. She will then send it out to the town staff, again, Amy and others that may need to just say, okay, there's no outstanding whatever.
So the, whatever the checklist, the checklist of items.
And then the ones that have cleared the town issues, those are the ones that go to the panel. And we did that, we're gonna do it on a rolling basis in deference to Amy and how busy her schedule is. But that's what we had all agreed upon. And it is referenced in this.
Yeah, I believe it's three and four in section
Yeah, in the
five, application process. That's where the finance subcommittee just needs to be added.
Where I had that, my apologies, and it will go back.
Okay. I just, one thing I have is under section four, general grant conditions. I thought where it says priority will be given to applicants with a single request unless funds are available is a little bit confusing because I know that applicants, if they have multiple properties, we discussed, they can come with more than one application except for they need to prioritize so that their number one will be with all the number ones. And then if there's money left over, we can look at the number twos. But I, this kind of reads to me that if you only have one, so that if you, if you're applying with two, it's, it doesn't really read that way.
We decided, and what I tried to do is be very careful in the language here, but we decided that it's all one round. But if somebody has more than one application, they prioritize.
Yep.
Okay? And we go through all of the first round applicants first. And then if there's still money left, because we've got to be careful, if there's no money left, it ends there.
Agreed.
That's why I put that. And if there's still money left, then other applications will be accepted. But the priority goes to that, everybody's first request, first priority.
Perfect. That's what we have.
This is where I had my antique picture.
She tried to do the flow chart on us.
It's one, priority one, but, and then the criteria, right?
Yep.
And then priority two, oh, and then the criteria, and that's the order system.
If we run out of money, then the second, you know, your second priority will not even be, we won't, we won't do it.
Okay.
Okay. One other thing that I think is in here somewhere about getting any other funding that they've gotten from any other federal or state funding would preclude some of this, or there's no double dipping.
No, so what we tried to do, and I think everybody had mentioned it, including Amber, is we, I changed the language. That was one of the first things she asked me to change, was to say that it's proposed, the, we're proposing the Simsbury Small Business Grant Program. It's intended to assist businesses do the shortfall in federal and state COVID relief programs. So it's not the double dipping. It's, it was a recognition that there were some federal and state programs available. People may have gotten funds for that, but it was limited. And this really is going towards things that unmet needs, especially in relation to, you know, deferred maintenance.
Is that in the criteria at all? Just, I mean, I have to relook, like nothing that we've gotten other?
So you do, you do get a point if you have not gotten any funding.
Yeah, okay, good, that's what I.
So we tried to even it out that way.
Okay. Okay.
And the other final note is, we talked about the composition. I did put it in. And our town planner is actually very excited, has done a lot of facade improvement programs, and would love to step up my committee, so.
Okay, so the couple items left to do is to get the okay from Bob DiCrescenzo, our town attorney. Right? Couple of small changes that we just discussed here.
And what I can do is I can resend the changes back no later than tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll copy the group again, and that way you can send that off to Bob, just reflecting a couple of small changes.
Okay, so we set our agenda for the next meeting next week. We'll set the agenda next, right?
For the full board or for the next?
Well, we would, if, to put this on the agenda, I have till next Monday, right, Tuesday.
And you're gonna put me on the December 12th.
But that is, if everything
Yes.
comes through, right? I think that's, I think we're ready to move that forward. We talked about using the remaining funding from tranche one only.
And I did reference that in my, I changed that in the, in my cover sheet as well.
You did. And now as far as the administrative fee, which is not easy to bring up, I'm not sure if that's negotiable. And we haven't talked about it internally at all at this point. I'm just not sure that that's gonna fly. I'm just gonna say that right here. And if this work could be done, given the funding that we give annually to Simsbury Main Street Partnership, if that would manage to get this handled in this first tranche.
I think we definitely have discussions, but I will just recognize that we are taking on something. It's for the good of the businesses, you know, it's why we're doing this and why we're championing this. But it will be a substantial amount of time and resources.
Okay.
And we're not asking for, you know, we're asking for 5%.
Okay, I would think we might want to take that back. I just, I just want to check with Maria and Amy. And maybe it's even a percentage of the applications that come, come in. Well, this, you know what I'm saying? Like, if we don't get 250, we get 100, you know, is it just a percentage based on each application as opposed to a flat rate? I don't know if you've thought about this at all either. Just.
I didn't think about that component. Yeah, if the 250 doesn't get spent, then it's not 5%.
Right.
Then we could do 5%.
Or a percentage of per application. I just want to make sure that we're comfortable. So that might be, I don't know if that'll be a deal breaker. Just, you know, I don't know if, I'd like to just take that, I guess, as a business dealing on the side before we sign off and move this forward. I'm gonna ask Amy, do you have any concerns or questions on the application, on the fundamentals, on your role in this? Are you comfortable with it? Okay. And Melissa, you, any comments from you on this project? Okay, okay. So I think we're agreeing that, you know, we get those couple items cleaned up, we verify this. We'll try to get it moved forward.
Sure.
Okay. So we have consensus. Okay, so I think that's it for the, for the business program? Knock wood. And we'll move on to the next agenda item?
Yep.
So we have a couple of agenda items here for potential use of ARPA funds, which is really just funds. I think I'm gonna just preface it by saying, you know, our ARPA funds are now our funds. And when we started this group, we had some outstanding projects that we knew we were gonna work on as part of the funding, which was the 501(c)(3), the business program, Farmingdale Valley Health District, and the Housing Commission. And those were presented during our budget, and those are supplementals that we plan to do. I believe the consensus of this group, and even Maria has been, to take the remaining funding, I think we've talked about this here, to use it in our capital budgeting process so that we can look at all the items that come through in the prioritized requests during our budget process, look at them together and see where we want to use the funding. And if there's any items in that list that stand out as an ARPA list, like the bridge did last year and the, the paddle pickleball courts, then we say the money is coming from ARPA to designate it as a community requested item of a high priority. So I just wanted to preface that here, that, you know, in my opinion, we're talking about these items as basically items for our budget. Maria didn't hear what I said, but not necessarily an ARPA usage. And we've presented it to the Board of Selectmen. Yo, come on in. I, I was just kind of sharing the, the theology, philosophy of, you know, how we use the ARPA funding going forward, that, you know, the intent really has been after we cleaned up those four items last year, we would use it in the capital budgeting process and find priorities there. Now, these are items that have come to light, I believe, and are asking for ARPA funding. But I, we're looking at them and we've presented it to the Board of Selectmen, is these are just gonna be budget asks in conjunction with other budget asks. And that we're just here to kind of prescreen and get any questions addressed or concerns before you come and get compared, you know, weighed in with other budget asks during our process. So like library, you know, SVAA is kind of an outside agency funding. That library comes in, has their own budget request. So these items, I would assume if they're your top priority, would be at the top of your list on the CNR or something like that. But we're here to hear about these and kind of, I guess, give feedback and see where we move it forward. And Maria or Melissa or Amy, you know, if you want to give your presentation on, on what you envisioned for these, that's fine too. That's my view, is these are just budget items that we're gonna, we'll look at with everything else, but here, you guys here first. Is that, is that line up? Okay. So I'm gonna turn this over to you. We have the libraries first. And then we're gonna talk to Karen and the SVAA, so.
Okay, so the first one that we have on the agenda is library material vending machines. And we have the proposal for one in Tarranville, one at the farms. And the library did their strategic plan and adopted it last year for the next five years. And one of the things that was paramount in that strategic plan is access to library resources, library materials, access to underserved communities and disenfranchised people. And we know that Tarranville is an underserved community and it's also a disenfranchised population. So that is why we chose to install one of these material vending machines in Tarranville. We also saw the farms as a high visibility center for the town. And people who go to the farms don't necessarily come to the library. So we thought that would be a high visibility place to put a material vending machine. Certainly if we had to prioritize, we would prioritize the Tarranville vending machine over the farms because this is a pretty significant ask of about $150,000. Should we cut it down to one material vending machine, it's about $90,000. They are a significant investment in funds, right, at the outset. But it is just that one investment of funds, and we see them lasting for about 10 years. And basically what they are is, you know, you have a vending machine that vends snacks. This vends library materials. And it would vend materials for people of all ages, all types of materials. So there would be DVDs, there would be books on CD, there would be playaways that we have for the children, there would be books. There would be anything that the library offers would be in the vending machine for people to borrow with their library cards. You'd have access 24/7, so even when the library is closed. And if you drive through Tarranville, when the bus is letting out, you see a population that you don't see in the library. So we're very eager to capture that population and have them use the library. And this is certainly one way that we could accomplish that. So I'm happy to answer questions.
Do you want to, do you have questions to start off?
I do have a few. So what kind of research have you done that shows the need for it? And that, you know, what sort of use that they would receive?
One of the things that we looked at when we were looking into this, we looked at the town of Mansfield. And they put in a number of years ago, it's not exactly a material vending machine. It's actually like a old pickup location in the downtown area. And if you're familiar with Mansfield, the library is out, it's out, side of the downtown area. And their inner, inner town pickup location got astronomical use as soon as it opened, right? But for us, what we really are interested in is that access. And again, as I said, when you drive through Tarranville and the people are getting off the school buses, you see people who don't come to the library. And we're interested in doing outreach to them. So we would be doing outreach to get them interested in coming to use this. And then hopefully, at some point, getting them into the library. But if they don't have the transportation to come to the library, and we're, we're guessing that that's part of it. And we saw with the book bike this year, when we did our outreach to Tarranville, we saw people that we don't see in the library. So that's really, it's sort of basic research. So we didn't do studies per se, but we have anecdotal instances where we see people that we don't see in the library. We have not yet looked for a location to put it. Obviously, you would need to have electricity and Wi-Fi access.
So that would be another, is that cost included in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So one, one item that I brought up, you, what we brought up, and I think historically we had done this as an outreach, was to open the Tarranville library during the summer hours.
Yes.
And I was just wondering if that's an option here, is it a less expensive option to have people actually have a physical place to come into? I don't know what the cost is to do that as opposed to a vending machine. That leads into the question too, what is the content in the vending machine? What if all the kids' books are sold out? You know, do we run the risk of like how much maintenance we have to do to keep it up to date on things that people are interested in reaching out for? I'll keep going here. So those are kind of, you know, more of my skeptical questions on this. Plus, we just put in the new loan lockers, which I don't remember what they cost, but that was the way, so that people could come in and get books at any time and order them and just come downtown and pick them up and bring them back when they wanted to. We also have the book bike as a outreach, which is at every festival. So I'm a little bit, honestly, a little skeptical on the actual need for these. And that actually people are gonna use them up at the farms. I mean, I know Tarranville's more important, but, so. I don't know like what the use is on this, like historically. And I also would like to know more about keeping Tarranville open in the summer because I see the book bike is another idea here that would go around to the schools. And if we did have that satellite library open, that might just solve both needs.
Well, let me address some of your ideas.
Yeah, thanks.
If we're talking about the book lockers, obviously they're located downtown. And one of the things that I already spoke about is that the people in Tarranville, those people don't come downtown to use the book lockers, to use the library. So we're looking to give them access where they are. So that the vending machine would address that. We would obviously have to wait to see the usage to know how often we would have to maintain them to fill them. We would not necessarily know what kind of books we would have to curate the vending machine with until they actually started to get used. And that use may be cyclical. You may see that in the summertime, it's very heavy in adult material. Or it may be heavy in children's material, if I don't know. It could be heavier in the wintertime in adult material and less heavy because the school library is open in the wintertime and the children will get their books at the school library. To address your point about the Tarranville Elementary School Library being open in the summertime, I think that would speak more to the other proposal that we have with the book bike. And certainly, we can talk about that when we get to that proposal. But we would be working in collaboration with Marty at Tarranville to make sure that we were not duplicating services, but rather collaborating on services. And maybe offering something different when the book bike goes to Tarranville than just material.
Have you been in contact with, with Marty Heckney about the idea and?
Well, she served on the Strategic Planning Committee.
Yeah, but I mean this specifically.
Well, not this specifically, but she is aware of the things that we're looking to do.
Who is Marty?
She's the librarian at Tarranville School, and she was on the Strategic Planning Committee.
And that, also, I'm assuming I saw it on an agenda for the Board of Trustees. Are they, have they made this a priority for the library to weigh in on this? Like, I haven't, I'll admit that I haven't watched the meeting or gone to a meeting, but I know it was presented there. Is this something that they, I mean, you've been on the library board. Do they ask for things like this? Is this an ask that they feel is a need for the library?
Well, it's based in our strategic plan, so yes.
Okay, so they worked on the strategic plan?
Based off the plan.
Okay, okay.
Yes, it's based off the plan.
Okay.
And one of the key components of that plan is access.
Okay, one more, just one more thought too, is have we tried, would we do a test run with the book bike, positioning the book bike out in the middle of Tarranville for, say, a week to make sure people are gonna use it? And if we had a, in?
Going back to your comment about having the book bike serve as the vending machine, the book bike's only available to people in the spring, the summer, and the fall. It would never be available in the wintertime. It's also not available in the evening. So the book vending machines would be 24/7. So say you can't sleep, but it's 10 o'clock at night, you could go to the book vending machine no matter spring, summer, winter, fall, and get your book. But the book bike, I mean, it's, it's going into hibernation right now for the wintertime. And it won't be going out till the spring, so.
So you just see this more for an after hours? Like, because of what you were saying. I'm just trying to see if there was a way to replicate the usage of the vending machine before outlaying the money for the vending machine?
I don't think that there is a way to replicate it.
Okay, so putting the book bike in a daytime hour out there to just see if Tarranville residents came to get books there because they don't want to drive to the library is not indicative of what the vending machine would be doing there?
No, because the access to the book bike would be completely different than the access to the vending machines. Because of the time limitations, because of the seasonal limitations. You also then need to allocate a staff member to be with that book bike.
Right.
Which is a significant outlay of personnel.
On a salary. Is there a security issue with these? Like, do we know that they're not, you know, as far as?
They are in many places throughout the world and they are unmanned. They're in train stations, they're in airports, they're in inner cities.
Okay. And so, so getting back to, as a priority question, when you come to us during the budget, will this be your top priority for the library?
If I have to weigh it against these two, I'd really have to seriously think about which would be the most priority.
Okay, because that's pretty much where we're gonna be, I think. I don't know if you have any, but we are, we're gonna have to look at this in, in terms of other, or other asks. So I was just curious as, you know, the top priority, if there's any other items that you guys are, have queued up for the library during the budget? Or just, is this just it?
Well, this is what we're putting together right now. We're putting together the library budget, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So Lisa, I have a couple of questions. What, do you have other access ideas that you guys are looking into for the library, for access to the town?
Not currently.
Not currently? And then I may say it in here, I apologize if I missed it, the capacity? What is the capacity inside the vending machine?
Would have to read through this again.
Okay, I can, I can sort of go back.
You can get them in multiple capacities. I think this is like a medium sized capacity. We didn't feel we needed a gigantic one, and we didn't feel that the smallest size would be adequate.
And have you, considering it needs Wi-Fi and different things, do you have different areas in Tarranville that you're kind of scoping out a little bit?
We were thinking about the mill, but we're not, again, we're not sure.
It wants the sidewalks and the roads, and that's okay, but that's a scary crossing.
Again, it's not something we really investigated yet.
But we have time between now and March, I guess, right? And then, but there are ongoing costs that would have to be in the operations.
Yeah, maintenance costs.
Maintenance is in here.
Okay, so that wouldn't, if, if we use ARPA or we don't use ARPA, that would have to come, just be budgeted?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't have anymore at this time.
Okay.
Thank you for presenting it.
Do you want to talk? Oh yeah, we're gonna talk about the next piece.
So our other proposal is for a book bike summer outreach program. So that would be taking the book bike Monday through Friday to each of the five elementary schools, one elementary school per day. And of course, we would work in collaboration with the elementary school library. And some of the elementary school libraries are not open during the summertime, but we do know that Tarranville is open during the summertime. But it is not open the entire summer. So we may not go to Tarranville throughout the entire summer, but perhaps maybe only the weeks that it's not open. That would make the library materials reading important in the summertime because of, you know, that summer slide for kids. It would make the library accessible to people in their own neighborhoods, in their own communities. As you know, Simsbury is a bike friendly community. It's a bike, it's a walkable community. And the library became a bike friendly business this past year. It promotes all of those things by bringing the library out to people where they are. The person that would staff the book bike would be trained in reader's advisory so they could help the kids and guide them into, you know, what would be adequate for their reading level so they wouldn't be reading things that are too hard or things that are too easy. There would be activities that would go along with the book bike, so it would be very engaging. And we're hoping in that way, obviously, broaden access, as I said, that's a huge part of the strategic plan. But it would also engage with people that maybe would not have come to the library before and would bring them into the library. And that, as you can see, the cost for this program is much significantly less than the cost for the vending machine. At about, what, $400?
I have a question back to the vending machine, actually. So one of the concerns you have is that gaining outreach to the residents who tend not to use the library. to the residents who tend not to use the library. Would they be able to, so those people do not have a library card, you would assume. So would they be able to get a library card through the vending machine for the first time? Or would they have to go to the library to get a, to get a library card to then use at the vending machine?
They would not be able to get a library card through the vending machine. You can get a library card online.
Okay, so back to the bike, sorry about that, just had me.
So that's a really good question.
That is a very good question.
So these are all operating expenses for the summer, right? So these would just be kind of in the budget?
Right, because we already have the book bike through ARPA funds through the state library.
Yeah, so this wouldn't be really an ARPA request. It would just be like a new line item? I'm not sure where it would fall in the budget.
Yeah, our thought, when we had flagged this, oh gosh, almost a year back as a possibility, is that again, part of the original intent of ARPA funds were for picking up the property, helping kids catch up in an educational setting, kids catch up for literacy. And we really felt like that this program, particularly with the opportunity to cover the schools, was a really nice, an opportunity for the literacy catch-up component. So we sort of have this idea of, you know, could we do sort of a pilot program for a few summers? Again, along that, that thinking of this as literacy catch-up and supporting that initiative. So again, sort of doing that pilot basis with ARPA funds.
But is there a reason that it couldn't just be in the regular budget? Like not targeted as ARPA funds? Because if we use ARPA mostly for capital, right, for kind of bigger ticket items and put this into the library budget, seems like that, then you could just extend it and not use ARPA specifically.
Could if you wanted to.
I mean, because that seems like the ARPA, I mean, I know personally, and we've discussed that the intent for the ARPA funding would be for capital, CNR items out of, you know, long range, tangible savings in a lot of instances to the public. Either save them tax dollars or bonding or buy something that we maybe couldn't pay for in this year and in out year. Or it's something that's been requested, like pickleball, the bridge. But if this is kind of a real library operating need, then it probably should be part of the regular ask.
Yeah, I remember, you know, even last budget season, we discussed really not wanting to use ARPA for new line items that will be a recurring line item.
Well, as Maria said, we were talking about it as sort of a pilot project as COVID recovery. We know through studies that, you know, children during the pandemic, their academic skills slid. So we were hoping to boost literacy for a couple of years with this project and then perhaps see where we were with it.
Understood, so it would be like a two-year ask of the ARPA funds? Kind of like social workers?
Or three, three is the proposal.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at the cost, if it's this much of a cost. It seems like we would have room in the budget to just, I haven't done the budget yet, but it seems like there would be room in the budget if this is the top priority of the library to include it there. You know, look at our capital needs. But again, we'd have to weigh, I don't know what else we're going to be looking at, you know, come March. I mean, it does sound like a good summer idea, in my opinion, if kids are around. I don't know, you know, like everybody, people aren't around in the summer. Are they all at the schools? Will they be playing at the playgrounds? You know, I like the summer reading program angle that's in here so that people can, you know, grab a book and sign up or keep going with the program. So it's just my comments.
Do you find this would conflict much with like all of the summer camps? And the library already has a summer reading program? Or do you think it will complement?
I think it would complement.
All right, got it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're up to, we have the summer volunteer ambulance program, the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association proposal.
So as you know, the police department upgraded their radio system this past year and went to a digital system. And when that happened, our radios became obsolete. We weren't able to communicate with the police department anymore. So when that project was initiated, we were kind of brought in with the budget and the line items to upgrade our radios as well. So we received new portables, new radios and ambulances. And we had some equipment under these towers. It's been very beneficial for us because our coverage in town has been fantastic now. We had a lot of dead spots where we couldn't hear over our radios and now that's not an issue anymore. But the biggest thing was we wouldn't be able to talk to police if we didn't make this change. So what we were asking for is that the cost could be forgiven. Basically, what SVAA was charged to do this project, falling under ARPA, if that's the perfect way to do it. Because basically, the equipment is the town's. If for some reason Simsbury Ambulance wasn't here anymore and you had another service, you actually could give it, that equipment would be used by that other service. So I think it was an important thing to do and it was a great program and it's been so much better for us. But the cost is pretty heavy for us to take on. Although the town was very generous with having a payout plan, but we thought maybe we could consider this and see if there was a way to use some of that funding to take care of that.
How long, how long has this been in, like when was this done?
It was 2021, when the system was implemented.
Yeah, and when they had to.
2021, probably summer, fall it was.
And did you guys ask for us to pay for it at the time? I'm just curious, I don't remember.
There was some discussion about it. I think it got kind of lost in the shuffle and it was only, and it was going ahead no matter what. So we kind of figured, let's get it all done and we would talk later. So when the talk later ended up being the agreement that the town made with us to pay it off over 10 years. And then after some discussions about this funding, not knowing that ARPA was going to happen and we needed this COVID money, that it'd be an appropriate use for it because it's basically a benefit to the entire town, not just Simsbury Ambulance.
Do we know how the other, the fire department, what happened when they had to upgrade their?
They didn't have to.
They didn't have to, it was only SVAA?
Some of them had to add things to the radios, but it wasn't nearly on the scale as the police department was. So we actually copied, they actually copied the fire department's radio process, which is very effective.
We basically joined their system. So it was already, the fire district system was already in place and then our services and Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance joined basically.
Joins the fire.
Onto their system.
Gotcha, okay.
Because they had such good coverage, you could hear them everywhere in town. Not just the sirens.
So would this like come as an outside agency request during the budget? How would this come to us?
So this is different from, so normally, the annual outside agency grant process is generally for contribution to their operating budget. This is different in that this is sort of a one-time capital investment or capital ask. You might also recall, I think back to the original placeholder list from June 2021, we had anticipated that there would be, again, an ask from the ambulance association. So I think we had this sort of a potential placeholder for an ask and just to again, to give them some time to figure out, you know, what would that ask look like, what would maybe the best value make the most sense? Would that be an ambulance, would that be something else? Obviously, this is substantially less dollar value than for just giving the ambulance. I think at the end of the day, they felt that this was an important priority for them.
Okay, and I know you guys, there's another potential ask of, for funding coming to the board also. So like, obviously, it would be good to look at both together as we go into the budget because it's going to happen at the budget time.
I guess I was pushing this as ARPA money as opposed to the other part was for town budget, is the way I was perceiving it.
Yeah, I'm trying to broach that because now it's real money. We'd like to use it for things that we could acknowledge, and this is my opinion, acknowledge we've used ARPA funds for so the community realizes they're getting, you know, pickleball courts, they're getting a fixed flower bridge, they're getting a bike trail, now they're getting public safety, right? We got the police dog car. So certain things like that is how I vision it. So when we look at the capital budget and the requests, we can say, you know, like we have the bridges coming up next year, $1.2 million. We could always say we're going to use ARPA funds for that if we have them so that the community knows, whether it's all the same money or not, they know that we are using it for something that they felt inclined to want to prioritize. But yeah, so this is, so would this be like a CNR item? I mean, for the, you know, how would this appear when we weigh it with other stuff during the budget?
Sure, so there was an approved capital project for the radio system project. And essentially, rather than having the incoming revenue from the ambulance offset babysigns, who would essentially be, this would be the incoming revenue as opposed to the revenue coming from the ambulance.
Okay, okay, and just, since you're here, like financially, I don't know what your financials look like. Is that something we would ask for if we're asking to provide funding to you guys? I mean, that's.
That's absolutely.
Yeah, you know, to show that there really is a need to maintain both the new ask that's not here and then this ask.
I guess again, and again, I want to reiterate that if, again, if we aren't here, all that's here, we're not taking, it wouldn't disappear. It's the town owner.
Yeah, so that's a good point, no, that's a good point.
And even our portables don't even say, they don't say, it says Simsbury EMS, which is very generic, saying we made sure that everything was as flexible as possible, not anticipating that we're not going to pay here. But the idea was, at least in my perception, was this really wasn't our equipment.
Got it, you just had to do it at the time.
Because we, you know, we couldn't speak to anybody, we totally mess up.
Yeah, it's interesting, it didn't come up, well, like we just, you guys just agreed to pay for it at the time, right? Because you had to, I guess.
Well, and we were part of the planning, which was good. So we kind of knew it was out there at this point. But I probably should have been a little bit more vocal at the time.
What is the, how was the loan structured? Is it, like what's the?
For 10 years, we just, we put an amount that was a payout, an annual payment. It was just an agreement that we made, so. And the other thing, the requests did have the payments to kind of delay till this is decided and if it's not approved. And obviously, we put on of the agreement, if it's approved, that would be the case.
So have any payments been made thus far? So nothing's been made? And then is there an interest percentage on it? Or is it just a straight loan? Oh, I thought it said it's a loan from the town. Okay, I didn't think so, but I just went to check.
It was a memory on a letter, Sandy.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the total amount, nothing's been paid on it?
Is it, was the MOU, like, the MOU, was that done at the board level? Did we, so would we have to undo that? I mean, even before we budget it for, would we all have to vote to like, say we don't, we want to relieve them of their obligation?
Yeah, we would just do a cleanup of that.
And just to reconfirm, the ambulance is the only other group with a loan pertaining to this police and, yes, to the radios?
Most of the other radio purchases were internal, so either town or Board of Education. We had police department needs, public works, Board of Education, but that's been all internal. So the ambulance, I was correct, was our only external sort of customer, if you will.
But that leads me to another question. Is there another group that could come to us and ask for forgiveness for the greater good? Like, do you have any other kind of MOUs or loans like this where they might say, well, you're given, we serve the community, we're giving, I don't know if there is, but I'm just asking. I just, you never know, right?
The biggest part of this is we kind of didn't have a choice. So we had to do something. That's the one big part of all this stuff. So we know we all needed it, but the police definitely did. And it just so happens that once they decided to go to this digital system, it just made everything kind of unusable.
Thank you.
Good.
It's not very exciting, I know. It's not as good as a book bike.
Yeah, I mean, so we'll have discussions later. But again, it's not fungible cash, right, for a bunch on our side, so. To the extent we're paying this, we'll be paying something else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have anything else on the table? So I'm going to ask for a motion, we had to do this back and forth. Ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.